Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular session of the Bojor Parish School Board for Thursday, August 15, 2019. We get started today will be led in the prayer by Mr. Wiggins and the pledge by Mr. Bamber. Before we do the prayer and the pledge, Superintendent Downey, do we have any special prayer requests for today?
We do, President Cheatham. We have a long list today, starting with, we need to remember Coach Beeson's family, keep them in our thoughts and prayers as they experience their new normal and move on after Coach Beeson's passing. Russian middle school clerical aide Linda Holbrook's husband passed away on July 31st. He was also Mandy Foy. She's an employee in child nutrition. It was also her stepdad. Ms. Donella Fowler is back in the hospital with tests tomorrow. Out at Horton Middle School, Ms. Taylor, one of our teachers, lost her 28-year-old son to an accident last week. And then we found out this afternoon that also at Horton Middle School, Mr. Michael Pedroti, our newly-named Assistant Principal, was diagnosed with cancer. And so he'll be making a trip to MD Anderson next week. And so please keep all those people mentioned and even those ones that weren't in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Downey.
Can I bow a head, please? Good Lord, thank you for another day of life, health, and strength. We ask for right now that all the names that have been listed who need your divine intervention be with them right now and for whatever they need and as long as they need, be with them, good Father, we beg and pray to you. Well, thank you for another opportunity to serve your people, to do what is right and just in your sight. Bless us. Let us have a fruitful meeting. Let us have a family-type meeting. Bless us all in our Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Say your pledge. I pledge allegiance to this law of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.02, approval of the minutes of the regular session of the board for August 1, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brotherton, a second by Ms. Darby. Motion carries. Item 1.03, approval of the agenda for the regular session of the board for August 15, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Newman. We have a second by Mr. Wiggins. Motion carries. Item 2.01, recognition, Bojor Parish School Good News presented by Sonya Bell's Public Relations Liaison.
Good evening, President Cheatham, Superintendent Downey, to all of our board members and audience. Summer is over officially, but don't think that our students and our educators were simply digging their toes in the sand over the break because they were doing some pretty amazing things during their time off. Starting with Darren Melton. Darren, would you please join me at the podium? Is Darren here? Okay, well Darren. Talk about him anyway. Darren is a sophomore at Horton High School, and he is also a member of Barksdale's Civil Air Patrol Squadron. And through the CAP, Darren has earned an endorsement to take the FAA private pilot written test, which is not an easy task to get to that point. You see, this endorsement was earned by graduating in July from Cadet Aviation Ground School at McGee Tyson Air Base in Alcoa, Tennessee, as part of the Civil Air Patrol's National Cadet Special Activities Program. And this school consisted of 56 hours of instruction, five assessments, and special activities, including an orientation flight aboard a Blackhawk helicopter, which is pretty cool. And by the way, CAP is a family affair for the Meltons because his mom, Amy, who is an educator also with Bojor Parish, serves as an aerospace instructor for Civil Air Patrol. So we want to congratulate Darren Melton for earning the distinction to be able to get to that point of earning the endorsement to take the FAA private written pilots test. We're also excited to announce that one of our own has been elected governor, Bhavani Tivakaran. Will you please come forward? Bhavani is a senior next door at Airline High School, and over the summer, she and approximately 400 other young ladies from around the state converged at Northwestern State University in Natchitoches for Louisiana Girls State. And I am proud to say that Bhavani was elected by her peers from throughout the state to the highest office in the land. Please meet the 2019 Governor of Louisiana Girls State. You may know about Girls State, but just to give you a little bit of background, Girls State is a national nonpartisan program that falls under the umbrella of the American Legion Auxiliary, teaching responsible citizenship and love for country. And students go there for a week, and they assume the roles of government leaders, they campaign in mock parties to become mayors, parish officials, and state leaders of Girls State, including governor. So what's next for Bhavani? Well, two girls are selected from each Girls State program to attend Girls Nation, which is a week-long national program in our nation's capital, Washington DC, where again, they run for political office, they campaign for the passage of legislation, and they also meet with our US Representatives, senators, and possibly even the President of the United States. So this is going to be a very exciting year ahead for Bhavani, or shall we say, Governor Tivakaran's. So please help me congratulate her. Awesome. And congratulations also goes out to one of our own educators. Please welcome Green Acres Middle School STEM educator, Robert Gallant. Mr. Gallant has been selected as a Louisiana state-level finalist for this year's Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching Program. And this is a very prestigious honor because he is one of only three finalists selected in Mathematics and Science to represent the state of Louisiana out of the hundreds across the state that applied for this. And he's going to be honored next month at a special ceremony in Baton Rouge. And he's automatically going to be advancing to the national level as a candidate for the Presidential Award in Science. And we were just chatting about this, speaking of the president, this is pretty exciting. If Mr. Gallant is named the Presidential Awardee, which you find out in December, it could mean $10,000 in his pocket and an all-expenses-paid trip for two to Washington DC to visit the White House. So let's give Robert Gallant a big round of applause and also congratulate him. We'll have you back in December when we find out you won. All right, congratulations. And that concludes my report for this evening, President Cheatham.
Thank you, Ms. Bell's. Item 3.01, request public hearing of the 2019-2020 budget presented by Frank Rougeau, Chief Financial Officer.
President Cheatham, Superintendent Downey, and members of the school board, the budget of the school board has been advertised in our legal journal over the last several weeks. Our budget has been on display at the central office. And as part of our adoption process, we have a time for public comment at this time. So if there's anyone that has signed up or not to speak on this item, now's the time. Okay, we can go ahead and move on to the next item.
Item 3.02, request adoption of the 2019-2020 budget presented by Frank Rougeau, Chief Financial Officer.
We do have a resolution that we asked the board to pass in adoption of our budget. This has been included on the board docs system for the last several days.
Have a motion by Mr. Bullard, second. We have a second by Mr. Wiggins. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, could I make just one comment?
Yes, Mr. Bullard.
I want to compliment Mr. Rougeau and his department. As we all well know, we came together and we have, we've sort of dissected and closely scrutinized the budget prior to the one that now proposed. And in every instance, any question that arose was answered. And to more complicate the situation, we went looking for money to fund some additional funding, not a lot, but every little bit helps in to find some additional funding for our employees. And he was successful in doing that along with the cooperation of our department heads. So I want to compliment Mr. Rougeau and his staff because they went above and beyond this year.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to second that emotion. I've been around for a while here with the board, and Mr. Rougeau has been the same. He has just persevered and tenacious and everything else. I just can't say enough about him. It's like a dream. He is the best I've ever seen. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did we already vote on that? Okay, I thought so. Item 3.03, request discussion and action concerning revised student attendance zone plan to be implemented beginning the 2020-2021 school year presented by Bob Hammons and Mike Hefner. And we do have several people that have signed up to talk on this subject. Mr. Hammons, do you want them to talk prior to or after you have?
Well, I think it might be better for me to give the explanation of the plan. It may answer some of their questions. But of course, we'd be happy to answer questions at the end as well.
Thank you.
I have a very brief introduction, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Hefner to put on the board the actual maps of the plan so that we can show you the changes that have been made. I don't know, I'm not good with electronics, so where do I point this? Anywhere? All right. I wanted to start this presentation by saying and clearing up a couple of things. These are the things that are not true. The school board has the authority to implement whatever student's attendance zone plan it desires. That is not true. This case has been under a, whoops. This case has been in litigation now for many, many years, a school desegregation case. And as a result, all student attendance zones have to be submitted to the United States Department of Justice for review, and they have to be approved by the court. So this board does not have the unilateral authority to adopt attendance zones as it desires. Secondly, doing nothing and maintaining the existing student attendance zone plan is a viable option for the board. That is not true. The court has issued an order, actually, the court issued an order last year saying that the 1920 school year, you would be implementing a new plan. Because of some delays in the process, the parties asked the court to delay that for one more year. And so now the court has ordered that a new plan go into effect by the 2021 school year. So we do not have the opportunity to do nothing because the court's order also says that at the end of the 1920 school year, the existing plan is eliminated. So we have to have a new plan in time for next year. Also, the court has given us until September the 16th to submit that plan. And so we're kind of in a little bit of a time crunch here. We did a lot of work on this plan over a period of time. We shared it with the US Department of Justice. We'll talk about that some more in a moment. There were some delays in the process, and we've only received notification from the Department of Justice as to its position on this plan within the last two weeks. So that's the reason we're bringing it to you now. That's the reason we're in somewhat of a hurry because of the fact that it has to be submitted by September the 16th. Also, what is not true is that this plan goes into effect as soon as it's approved by the judge. The plan will go into effect for the 2021 school year. This is not a change of anything for the 1920 school year. The only changes that are going to be impacted will be changes that will go into effect next year and thereafter. So this is a 2021 plan. How we got here, 1964, this lawsuit was filed. So it's been pending now for a long time, and we hope to move it toward conclusion after the adoption of this plan or one like it here soon. That'll be one big step in that process. The United States Department of Justice is a plaintiff in the suit. Again, while that we have a case pending, as we do, we are required to have federal court approval of all changes in attendance zones. So what we're here tonight is to talk about a proposal to see if this board is satisfied enough with it to authorize me to file it with the court for approval by the court. In the last 10 years, we have requested and obtained permission from the court to amend these zones in a number of instances, primarily because of new construction and growth in your parish. And I think you should be happy with that growth. There are a number of parishes in this state that would be thrilled to have that problem. But it is a problem that has resulted in some changes in zones and has required that we go back to the court for approval of those zones. I mentioned this before, the original court order said that we had to have this done by April 1. That was extended to September the 16th. We began working on this plan last fall to cover all schools in the district. And then we had to look at every attendance zone of every school at every grade level in the district. And that's what Mr. Hefner and I did, but we didn't do that alone. We networked a number of people in that process. We began by having multiple meetings with every single principal in the entire district. And we sat down with the principals, we talked to each of them about what would happen to their school zones, whether they thought these were good changes, bad changes, other suggestions they might have as to how we could address these issues. So again, there were multiple meetings with the principals, and we met with every single principal. We met obviously with Mr. Haddon and the transportation staff because a number of these changes are going to require changes in transportation, and we wanted to see whether or not these were doable items. And I think you're going to find that they are. Mr. Norwood and his staff were very helpful in providing a number of pieces of information to us, including in particular, the capacity of existing schools and the anticipated future growth in the parish. So again, we called on him and his staff on multiple occasions. Mr. Hefner, who is going to be putting up the plans here in a moment, you know, was retained by the board. He is probably the best school demographer in the state of Louisiana. He's been accepted by the federal courts as an expert witness. And he worked hand in glove with me as we tried to put this plan together. And he also had information on the anticipated future growth in the parish, which we considered in the process of putting up, putting together this plan. You mentioned Mr. Rougeau, and I agree, Mr. Wiggins, with your comments about Mr. Rougeau and the job that he's done for so many years. But we also had to talk about money to see if there were going to be money issues involved, and so we did that as well. And finally, last but not least, the superintendent and staff we met with on a number of occasions to talk about instruction, talk about finance, to talk about everything else that needed to be talked about in the process of putting together this plan. Now, these were our goals, and I narrowed them down to six. There were more than six, but these were the six that I considered to be the highest priority. Number one, to maximize the racial diversity in the schools to the extent practicable. That is the legal requirement in the United States still. Maximize desegregation to the extent practicable. Number two, reduce student transportation times and distances wherever possible. Number three, to eliminate split school zones to create pure feeder patterns for all students. And let me explain briefly what a feeder pattern is. What a feeder pattern is, is that all students who go to a particular elementary school matriculate to a particular middle school and matriculate to a particular high school. We currently have a situation in this parish where we have a number of instances where children go to elementary together, and then they split. And some of them go to one middle school, and some of them go to another middle school, and they meet with students, meet up with students who they have not previously attended school with. In our plan, as we're going to describe here in a few moments, all split zones have been eliminated. You have a 100% feeder pattern plan. And I can tell you, I've been doing these plans for over 40 years. It's the first time ever in a district of this size, we've been able to see a 100% compliance with a feeder pattern plan. I'm very proud of that fact. Number four, minimize the use of temporary buildings wherever possible. And of course, the way you minimize the use of T-b buildings is by making better use of your permanent structures. And so we had to look at the capacities, and again, I mentioned that the staff's assistance in doing that, to figure out how we could make optimum usage of our existing facilities so that we could minimize the number of T-b buildings. And I think we've done that as well. Number five, to anticipate the future demographic changes. You know, it doesn't do you any good to come up with a zone this year and then next year not have planned for growth or planned for loss and end up with a situation where you have to come back and start all over again. So we looked at that as carefully as we could. We looked at the areas that were growing, and you're going to see some of the changes that we made were made in anticipation of future growth. In some instances, we've left space in schools knowing that there will be subdivisions built in the near future in those areas, and that those subdivisions are going to overcrowd those schools if we haven't left capacity within those schools to accommodate those students. And sixth, last but not least, by a long stretch, is that your existing plan has a number of school zones which are just described as being a line. And in many instances, they're a line across a field. Well, if you go to buy a house or build a house, there's no way for you to know which side of the line you're building on because the lines are imaginary. And so one of the things that I, and I really want to commend Mr. Hefner for this because this is very tedious work. He took your existing districts and then he moved them, he moved the boundaries to visible boundaries. A railroad, a highway, a bayou, to visible boundaries so that when people move into an area, if they move on this side of the railroad, they're going to know exactly where they go to elementary, they're going to know exactly where they go to middle school, and they're going to know exactly where they go to high school because of the feeder patterns. We don't have that currently. So one of the big changes that you're going to see in this proposal is that some of these districts, which may have looked real pretty before, maybe a square, now look all jiggly. And the reason that they look like that is because we've tied the boundaries to things that people can actually see. You know, and a bayou is not as straight as a straight line down the page. So that was the sixth change that we made here, which we think will help everybody in the parish. Now, we talked about those six goals, and we're going to explain them more as we talk about the plan, but let me just go back to these very quickly, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Hefner to put the maps on the screen. Maximizing racial diversity. The technology that Mr. Hefner has allows us to draw some type of a polygon, any kind of shape we want, over any area of this parish, and hit a button, and that technology tells us instantly who lives, the number of students who live in that zone, their races, and their grades, and where they go to school. And so in the process of doing this, you know, we played the what-if game. What if you moved the line here? What if you went to this bayou? What if you went to this railroad? And so for every one of these zones, we probably looked at 50 or 100 different possibilities to try to figure out the best way to accomplish that. And the fact that we were able to maximize the racial diversity to the extent practicable, and what that means is you're not required to bus children 40 miles from one end of the parish to another end of the parish just to have racial balance in the schools. That's not the requirement. The requirement is that you do something that's practicable. And to me, I think that we've accomplished that, and I think that that is supported by the fact that the proposal that you're getting ready to see has been shared with the US Department of Justice, and they have signed off on this proposal. That is critical. And what that tells me is that they looked at this for the same reason, to determine if there was something with this plan that could be done to increase the diversity more than what we had proposed to do. And they did not come back with a single suggestion, which indicates to me that they think that we did a really good job in that area. Reducing student transportation times and distances, what you're going to see is that there are a few children who will be changing schools. But I want to make sure that the public in particular understands what we're talking about. According to recent data, there are 22,859 students in this school system. And I know that changes day-to-day a little bit. 22,859 students. This plan causes 371 students to change school. 371 out of 22,800. So I want to make sure that people understand that the changes that we're making here are very subtle changes. There are some children impacted, but not a lot of children impacted. And actually, that 371 is a little bit misleading because in the Benton area, we counted children, a few children who were moved from Kingston to Benton Elementary for the fifth grade. But there will be no fifth grade at any of those schools beginning next year because beginning next year, the old middle school will be converted to a fifth and sixth grade center. The old high school will be converted to a seventh and eighth grade center. So that means that the number who are actually moving to a different school is less than the 371, and actually, it's probably closer to 350 if you don't count that particular change. So we're only talking about a relatively small number of kids, but for those children, what you're going to find when we look at these maps is that their transportation times and distances were reduced in almost every single instance. As a matter of fact, I can't recall with one possible exception where the route, it may take them five extra minutes to get to school. Every other train, change has been made to reduce transportation times and distances, and we'll show you that on the map. So again, I'm proud of that. I talked about we've eliminated the feeder patterns, very proud of that. We have, we've minimized the use for the temporary buildings by making better use of the facilities, as you're going to see. Mr. Hefner, again, with his demographic data, has allowed us to plan space in these buildings. And as you're going to see, we now have 100% visible boundary lines between every district. So we really think that this is a very good proposal. We think it warrants careful consideration by the board. I did want to, I indicated before that we've sent it to the Department of Justice. They tentatively approved of it, but I want to make sure that you understand that I told them when I went to them that this was just for some preliminary conversations and that I had to bring it back to the board for the board to vote on it. And the board had not done that yet, and that the board would want to do this in public so that the public could be heard on that, and that hadn't happened yet either. So there haven't been any promises made other than the fact that this is the plan that Mr. Hefner and I have prepared after receiving the input that I have described. And so, Mr. Hefner, if you can possibly pull up your maps, then we can talk our way through some of these districts.
I have a question, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but initially, the DOJ sent us a map that was much different than this one. And then we came up with this map, and in theory, when we discussed this, we were like, I'm not so sure the DOJ is going to do this, but maybe they'll meet us somewhere in the middle. So then we were pleasantly surprised when they actually accepted this. Is that, am I on the right track with that?
Well, they never actually gave us a map. They told us what they wanted to see, even though they never showed us how it would work in reality. And so we were waiting and have been waiting for a number of months to get their proposal back. Because what the court said is, you either reach agreement on a plan or you each submit your own plan. And so, you know, we were prepared to submit this as our own plan if necessary, but we have been able to reach agreement on it, which is outstanding because that allows the court to approve it in a much to approve it in a much more expeditious fashion.
Thank you.
And to, Mr. President, and to expand upon that, this could look drastically different to a more negative impact to the total number of students, correct?
Oh, there's no question about it. If in fact, the, the, the Department of Justice came forward with a plan, I can assure you that more than 371 students in the whole parish would be impacted. And I can assure you that the changes would be much, much more dramatic than what we're getting ready to describe to you.
Thank you.
Also, if the two parties submitted their own plans to the court, the court has the ability to accept either plan or to come up with its own plan. And so, the federal judge would have the authority to draw those districts any way that he saw fit, uh, despite the position of, of either the Department of Justice or the school board. So, once again, we would not be in a position to know what we would get at the end of the day, but I, I don't think it could be much better than this particular proposal.
Thank you.
Let me, uh, and I tried to figure out a logical way to do this, but I really couldn't come up with a logical way to do this. Uh, I was gonna, gonna focus primarily on the changes that are being proposed, those 371 students. The, for everybody else, the other 22,500 students would continue to go where they go now. You know, with the one exception that if they were moving into the fifth grade and they're in the Benton area, they're gonna go to the new Benton fifth and sixth grade center next year. But, but with, again, with the exception of these 371, everybody else is gonna be exactly where they would have gone before, which again, to me, shows the minimal impact. And another way to describe that, and I can't tell, Mr. Heftner, which, which map, is this the elementary map you have up?
This is elementary.
Can you pull up, is it possible for you to go back and forth?
Yep.
To, to the, go to the high school map?
Uh, high school map?
Sure.
Yes.
By the way, these maps are on the wall outside. If anybody wanted to go look at them up close, we have the elementary on the left, we have the middle in the center, and we have the high school on the right. So, you have the capability of going, looking very carefully, uh, closely at these, at the lines to see where they would be drawn under this proposal.
Give me a second, I'll get this, uh, up a little bit so you can see what the difference is.
The technology here is re- is really remarkable, uh, what he was able to do with this machine. And, uh, I can tell you, 40 years ago when I was doing these kinda plans, it was a little bit more difficult than this.
Uh, what you see here is the, in the shaded area is the, uh, proposed high school. What you see in the, uh, in the red outline is the existing high school boundary. So, there's very little, very little change. In fact, some of the changes mostly have been trying to get to a physical boundary rather than a non-visible. We do have an area-
So, so, again, if you go, let's, let's start at the north at Plain Dealing.
Okay.
If you look at the Plain Dealing district, it's exactly the same.
All we do is follow the, uh, bayou and some other, uh, other features here to eliminate these non-visible boundaries.
So, we eliminated the, the invisible lines across the fields and we used bayous and highways instead. So, that's the only change in Plain Dealing, none other. Uh, if you move down, we're gonna take Benton, let's, let's take Benton last because there are a couple little, small changes in Benton. In the Horton zone, no changes, none. Now, don't forget, we have pure feeder patterns. So, that means that when you look at this high school map, you're also in most instances looking at the middle school map because they're identical. Now, in a couple of the, of them, you have more than one middle school in a high school zone, but they both feed the same high school. So, the kids, the elementary kids would feed a particular middle school, that feeds a particular high school. Again, those children would go to school together from pre-K all the way to 12. But, if we go south, again, Parkway.
Parkway is identical.
Parkway identical to the existing Parkway, other than we use some bayous and some rivers rather than some invisible lines. If you move up into, uh, the only two changes have been very subtle changes in, well, there's, there's one change in Airline as well. So, there's been very, very subtle changes in Bossier, in Airline, and in Benton. And so, we can figure out which direction we wanna go with that.
We tried to, we did, we came in and we brought the railroad tracks in as the, uh, as the boundary between the two rather than winding in and out. So, this area here was, uh, previously going to Bossier. It would be, uh, everything north of railroad track would then be going to Airline.
Again, visible boundary railroad track. If you're north of the railroad track and east of the railroad track, because there's a rail, another railroad that runs north-south there, right about, almost right there. And if you notice, to the west of that is Bossier Elementary. And to the north, and Bossier Elementary now also is divided by the railroad track to the south. So, it's got the river on the west, it's got the railroad track on the south, it's got the railroad track on the east, and so, the Bossier Elementary Zone has been changed slightly. The, also, at Central Park, which is adjacent there too, some of the students who had been previously assigned to Bossier Elementary are now reassigned to Central Park. And also, there are a few students who were previously assigned to Kerr because the Kerr District goes all the way to Central Park. And so, we took those children who were within spitting distance of Central Park and took them out of Kerr and reassigned them to Central Park. I, I'm sure that there was a two-thirds reduction in transportation times and distances by doing that and there was the capacity in those schools to accommodate that. So, again, um, and I don't know which map.
That's the elementary. That's that area right here that was changed.
Right. That, that area right there, which is adjacent to, to, um, to Central Park, has been, uh, assigned to Kerr. And if you look, if you go out to the, further to the east, you can see how far the Kerr District goes. Can you carry, take it on across my? Yeah, the Kerr District goes all the way to Horton. And yet, that little area right next to Central Park was going all the way to, to, out to Kerr. And so, we took that and reassigned that to Central Park, which helps with the capacity in both of those places. And those kids all still go to Bossier Elementary, so there's no, I mean, excuse me, Bossier High School. So, there's no change there. They still go to Russian, there's no change there. So, again, subtle changes at the elementary level, uh, in the Bossier District, no changes at the middle school level, no changes at the high school level, and in every instance, the children go to school closer to their homes. If you move up into Airline, the change that was made in Airline was the one that Mr. Heftner just showed you. If you, if you notice the existing area north of that railroad track, right, come, comes, alright, right there, right where he has his pointer. That area north of the railroad track previously was assigned, uh, to Bossier, Bossier High School. And because it's on the north side of that railroad track and we made the railroad the physical boundary, that area was reassigned into the Airline District. Uh, there was not, that helped us with maximizing our desegregation and helped us with capacity at the schools further south of the railroad. Uh, it was, uh, it was, uh, also railroad there running north and south following that boundary right there. So, again, very visible boundaries and those, those children in that particular area were reassigned to the Airline High School Zone. And again, you know, you have two, uh, middle schools there and, uh, uh, the two middle schools being Green Acres and Cope, those children were all assigned to Green Acres Middle School. So, again, we're gonna have the, uh, Apollo and Plantation Park would be feeding Green Acres and W.T. Lewis and Stockwell would be feeding Cope. And both of them would then feed Airline. So, again, very, very subtle changes impacting a small number of children. And then, if we go further north to the Benton Zone, you're gonna see a couple of changes in the Benton Zone. Um, I guess we can start, are we gonna start on the north end of the, or the?
This red line is your existing boundary. You can see it was just winding in and out. And what we did, we came in down south and picked up some more natural boundaries, uh, cleaning up some of that and, uh, taking care of some requests that the district had with regards to, um, to the Benton and Airline, uh, boundary lines.
This was one of those locations where we had a split zone. We had a subdivision where half the kids were going one direction and half the kids were going another direction. And so, we, we cleaned that up using the visible boundaries. We moved all those children into, uh, the Benton Zone and out of the Airline Zone, but because we had added kids to the Airline Zone from the south, that, the, the population there really shouldn't change too much. And this allowed us to eliminate that, those, one of those split zones that I had talked about earlier. So, there is a change that was made there and then there's one change made on the north end of that zone as well. The old Plain Dealing Road that leaves from the city of Benton and goes north toward Plain Dealing has, uh, up to this point, been assigned to, uh, Kingston Elementary. Now, if you look on the map where they, where that is located, those kids would come down old, um, Plain Dealing Road and would come into the city of Benton and then they would go south on Benton Road toward Kingston. Under our plan, they stop at the city of Benton. And instead of being assigned to Kingston, they're assigned to, uh, Benton Elementary, which is about half as far. So, again, we've reduced the transportation times and distances of those children by about 50%. There are, um, I was looking for the number of children there, but there was about-
112, uh, K-4.
Yeah. There were 112 children impacted by this move. Uh, but again, those children would go to Benton Elementary through fourth grade, beginning in fifth grade, all of the kids in the Benton Zone. And that's gonna include Benton Elementary, that's gonna include Legacy, that's gonna include, uh, Kingston. Um, all of the schools in the Benton Zone would feed the fifth and sixth grade center, the seventh and eighth grade center, and the new Benton High School. So, again, there was a change there. Also, within the city limits of the city of Benton, there were, uh, students who lived virtually within a mile of the school who also were reass- had been assigned to Kingston. Now, that was done years ago when Kingston was first constructed. And so, what we're proposing here is that because those children live so close to Benton Elementary, they should be rezoned to Benton Elementary. They still will matriculate with all the other children in that zone to the fifth, sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade, and ninth to 12th centers, uh, beginning in the fifth grade, uh, anyway. Uh, so, again, uh, I think that those were the changes. Every, in almost every other instance, the change has been to, uh, to create visible boundary lines. And, uh, other than the ones that, oh, excuse me, there was one other and that was, uh, uh, Stockwell.
Yeah. That's the other major one.
Yeah, there was one other, I apologize. And that was over between, uh, Stockwell and, uh-
W.T. Lewis.
W.T.
This area right here. This, this area right here.
We have, we have some, some capacity issues, uh, going on at, uh, at Stockwell and we had more capacity available at W.T. Uh, and so, what we did was, we moved one area from Stockwell to, uh, W.T. Lewis. And I mentioned at the outset that I thought there may be one subdivision that had to go a little bit further and this would be the one subdivision. And again, both of those kids, all, all those kids come together again for middle school and high school, but for, uh, K to five, that one little area right where he has the marker right now would be rezoned from Stockwell into W.T. Lewis and again, matriculating on to, uh, to Cope and to, uh, Airline High School. So, now I think that was-
That area right there.
I think that covers all of the changes. In every other situation, the children would go to the same school that they currently attend under this proposal.
Yeah, let me just, uh, since you've covered already the, um, Bossier Elementary, but we were looking at the high school map, let me just pull it up here so we can, we can see it on the elementary map. This is the area here, this, this line here, click this off. The red line here is your existing boundary for Bossier Elementary. We cut it at the railroad track as you described and I just wanna be able to show them, uh, on the map, this area here that would go to Central. And then, this corner up here, uh, also would be, uh, coming from, uh, from Kerr over into, uh, Central, Central Park. So, these are the two areas that you described a little earlier, but this is on the elementary map. So, it cleans up the lines quite a bit. It's just gonna make it a lot easier for people to figure out which, uh, school their, their children be going to. This is the other area here on the difference with, uh, Plantation Park to Apollo, on the elementary side.
Mr. Hammond, I know you explained this, but, but if you will reiterate, when you show me Bossier versus Airline and you say the line is divided by the railroad track, why would you take students from Bossier with it being, having less numbers and put them in Airline High School?
Well, two, two, two reasons. Number one is, again, or maybe three. Number one, allows us to have a visible attendance zone, which would be the railroad. That means that buses don't have to try to cross a railroad track to get kids from there to school. Um, number two, and perhaps most important, is that, you remember, our first goal was to maximize desegregation where possible. The addition of those students to Airline High School helped their percentages, uh, from a desegregation component or standpoint. And also, we took some children who currently were in the Airline District and now have reassigned them back to Bossier High School. And so, there was a kind of a trade-off there on, uh, on some of those kids who had been going to, uh, Airline before and now we're sending them. If that's, if that's the map right there, uh, Mr. Heftner, if you can see the, the, I don't know what color those lines are. Take, can you take the streets off?
Which one? Streets off? Sure.
Yeah, I'm just, just, it makes it easier to see. Right there to the left, the little, the little foot area, looks like, looks like Snoopy or somebody. Uh, that area right there, you see the line that he's drawing, he's coming down? That's the existing line of Airline High School. And if you'll notice, it includes all of Bossier Elementary. So, Bossier Elementary was feeding Airline High School when it's within blocks of Bossier High School. And so, what we did was, we rezoned Bossier Elementary away from Airline and into Bossier High School, which only seemed logical to me for Bossier Elementary to feed Bossier High School. Uh, but, we added those children into Bossier High School and then we took that other group out of Bossier High School as a trade-off and also to allow us to, uh, enhance desegregation at Airline High School. So, those were the, the reasons why, uh, that was done. I know this is a lot to, 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 to grasp, but I'd be happy to, Mr. Heftner and I would both be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. I really think, again, I'm, I think this is a really good plan. Uh, it, it makes some changes, there are gonna be some children impacted and I don't wanna minimize that, but I think the number is relatively small and I think that this is a long-term plan for the school board going forward, beginning next year. And I think it's a big step in getting this desegregation case finally ended. And so, certainly would be my recommendation to the board that it look very, um, carefully and, and considerably, uh, at this particular proposal. I know there may be other questions that I can answer, maybe even from the audience.
Mr. Hammond, you speak on the pros, um, and there are good, good things about the plan, but if you could, speak a little bit on, on the cons. What, what would be, um, a negative impact?
The cons of this plan? Well, it's been my experience, as I've done this for many years, that no parent likes to have their child moved. That's the bottom line. And in this plan, there are going to be a few children who are gonna be forced to go to a different school. Now, again, I, I, you see the changes and I don't think they're that drastic of changes and these kids would be getting back together at the middle and high school levels anyway, but the, um, the only con that I would see is the fact that, you know, there are going to be some children who are gonna be displaced from one school to another school and oftentimes parents are not happy about that. So, uh, you know, that's why I began with saying, doing nothing is not an option. We have to do something. And I really think that, that if we have to do something, you know, this is, uh, a really good step in the direction of bringing this lawsuit to an ultimate conclusion.
Uh, Mr. Heftner, could you show me the numbers of how, um, the impact of the difference of the numbers on Benton Elementary and Kingston, um, what the changes will be?
Sure. Give me a second, set that up.
I think they said about 112.
Oh, I did forget and that reminds me and I appreciate your question, Ms. Smith. There is one other little tiny subdivision and I forget the name of it, but it's in, currently in the Legacy Zone, in the very far northwest corner of the Legacy Zone, uh, that we have rezoned to Kingston. to Kingston. I don't know the name of the, maybe you can pull it up on the map. It's actually closer to Kingston, and it helps us with capacity at Legacy. You know, Legacy was one of those schools where we planned for future development. We know that they have some areas, some land there that's going to be developed soon, and so we wanted to make sure that we had capacity for the growth in that particular area. So we took the very, well, you can just barely see it there on the map, but the very northeast corner of the Brown Area, right where he's got the marker, that area right there is currently assigned to Legacy. And we, we took out those, some of those Kingston kids to send to Benton Elementary, and we swapped them with those kids right there who would, who are currently assigned to Legacy. And so the net result is that it, it allows you to keep your student population at Kingston and frees up capacity at Legacy for future growth. And it's closer to Kingston than it is to Legacy from that particular area. So again, it was a reduced transportation times and distance, and helped make better utilization of your facilities.
To answer your, your question, we're looking at, we look, this area here currently goes to Kingston, that's in red, it would be going back to Benton like it was before Kingston was opened, and that, and that zone drawn on a K four. You have 112 students, of which 78 are white, 21 are black, and 13 are other. This is where Benton is, and right now, they're coming down to Kingston down here.
And what would be the overall population impact, and how would that decrease?
Overall population?
What would be the numbers for Kingston versus Benton Elementary?
Uh, hang on one second, I'll pull up these numbers. Now, these are based on student residency. These are not including any transfers or anything like that. This is based on where the students live. If they went to the school that they was, that they, within the zone they lived in, that's, that's the numbers that we use.
Yes.
That's our benchmark. Benton Elementary on a K four would be 634, based on residency. Kingston is a five, K five, so it would be 712. Legacy under this plan would be 625, which is one of the things we want to try to do is get some growth and some capacity for future growth.
Well, actually, Kingston would only be a four as well, because they would all be going, all of them need to be K fours.
That's correct, with the, with the new...
All three would be, all three would be K fours.
All of them would be K fours.
Correct.
So on a 4th grade, Legacy would be 520, and Kingston would be at 592. And Benton at 634. And Bojor at 232. No, I'm sorry, I don't want to blow you off, at Benton, 634.
Are there any other questions of the board members? I know, Mr. Cheatham, you said there were some cards that were turned in, and I don't know whether there are questions from audience members, or whether they just prefer to make comments.
Okay. Any other questions, board members?
I have one more.
Tim?
Mr. Downey, I know that we've had some conversation, can you kind of give an overview of the thought? I know my district is primarily impacted, and actually, my house and where I live, and I've had the privilege of four of my children attending Benton Schools and being in this district, and it serves well. And I know for all three of these districts, you know, you can't make a wrong choice. But I know that we do have, I know children are resilient, and I know children will adapt. I know parents don't always make those adaptations so easily. So for children who've been at the school for kindergarten through 3rd grade, and they're going to be in 4th grade next year, what kind of adjustments are we planning to make? Or for students who are going to be, you know, I guess, elementary, so we'll just address that.
Well, we've had these discussions, and we're going to work with parents and, and try to have the least impact on those students that we possibly can, because most of us are parents or grandparents, and we understand that. But, you know, the commitment we'll make is that we're going to do everything we can to make this as, as least impactful as we possibly can without just being specific about the opportunities. But I think that there's been some concern voiced to me about maybe some of the students that are going from Kingston to Benton Elementary. And Ms. Gag, who's our accountability supervisor, is here, and, and she's got some information about the history of Benton Elementary and the successes they've had. And so if it would be the pleasure of the board, I would ask that she share some of that information with us, just so that it's out there and people have access to it, if that would be the pleasure of the board, Mr. Cheatham?
Let's do the public comments first, and then we can come back and allow her to do that. If we don't have any other questions from board members, we will move to the public comments at this time. And, and the way I put these in order was the time that you signed in on your, on your slip, so that's the order that we'll have. Each person that turned in the request slip will have three minutes. Mr. Bamberg is our timer for that, so you'll have three minutes to, to speak, and then we'll move to the, to the next request slip. Our first slip is by Dee Warner.
So I get timed. Did anybody get the set of questions that I emailed and requested? I was told that they would be answered prior to us speaking to you.
I forwarded those to Mr. Hammond, and he included some of that information in his presentation. And if there were any that you weren't satisfied with, one of us can attempt to answer those.
Would you like me to do that first, or speak first?
Excuse me?
Would you like me to do that first, or speak first?
Your choice.
Well, my main concern was, you know, we heard that it was 112 students that were getting moved. What is the percentage using these maps of the desegregation that's going to happen? So he said 13 and 73. Well, what about the school in general? Out of this 634 students that are going to Benton Elementary, what is the percentage? And what room for error is there that we don't have to change in five years? Like, how long is this going to last? Based off of your percentages, based off of people's incomes, based off of race? What are the percentages?
I can probably answer some of it, at least for what it is based on residency using last year's student addresses. Right now, under this plan, Benton Elementary would be 77.2 percent white, 15.3 percent black, and 7.41 percent other. It's hard to do a projection based on race, because we can basically get pretty close based on overall population. But when you're trying to figure out, well, how many subsets of that population, based on race, are going to be moving into an area, it's very difficult to ascertain that. So a lot of areas, it generally doesn't, doesn't vary too much, but that's not a hard and fast rule. A lot just depends on what kind of housing development comes up, what kind of employment opportunities come up, lack of opportunity, if there's been a large employer and it shuts down, you see a change in demographic profiles. But that is what the, the numbers are based on the residency. That's what we've submitted to the...
Okay, that'll be sufficient. So my only other question is, what is the student teacher ratio according to the numbers that you have for the following year? And are we going to lose any teachers that will have to be transferred to another school to accommodate more students?
That's the district's...
I can, I can respond to that. We, we staff all our schools with the same teacher-pupil ratio. It's lower for Elementary, then it increases slightly for Middle and, and even more for High. So that's, ratio will not be impacted by this. It's, it's going to be consistent throughout the parish, no matter what the move is. We're constantly shifting teachers to accommodate increases in enrollment or decreases in enrollment. That's something we do at the beginning of every year, absent a consent decree agreement. And then the other question was, I think, can we guarantee this won't happen again in five years? Our hope and desire is that we settle this lawsuit and we get out from under this consent decree, so we are not as, so we don't have to be as responsive to the Department of Justice in the future. And I think Mr. Hammond referenced that, that is our desire, and that's what this attempt is for.
So you don't project that if we go from 715 students, say, at Kingston, down to 600 or less, that you won't lose teachers at that school?
Well, I can't guarantee that, that any population shift for any reason isn't going to result in a teacher being reassigned to another elementary or middle school.
Okay, fair enough. All right, that was the last of my questions, so I will start my time. Okay, so, good evening, I should have said that first. My name's Dee Warner, I'm a parent of four children in Bojor Parish School District. I live on Old Plain Dillon Road, which my kids are one of the 112 affected. But that wasn't the purpose for this evening. I appreciate you allowing us to speak. I feel like we should have had more opportunity to go over this, other than the past two days, since it came about, you know, everybody's trying to figure out what's going on. And if we started this in the fall of 2018, you know, why do we have two days to look over it, and then you want to vote on it this evening? So the change art org petition that I started was to get enough signatures for you to not vote on it tonight. You know, look it over a little bit deeper before you go. I understand that it's a federal lawsuit, that we have to do it, but also think that more people should be able to state their opinion before you just go into a vote. It's due on the 16th of next month, so there is another meeting prior to that, so you would be able to still submit that before the deadline. The 171 signatures are requesting that you don't vote. If you do force it to a vote, I pray that you vote no. I don't feel like some of these lines are, are being done correctly. We just can't get it right. And I get that we have to change them because of the lawsuit, but this is the third time that we've changed in five years. So it's not healthy for our students. We want to continue to see the high scores and the growth in our students on the standardized testing and getting the high grades for the schools. Our children need more stability. I am glad to hear that only 350 students are affected. If the board wants to propose that hardship request will be considered for certain students that are in 2nd, 3rd grade, that will no longer have siblings at the elementary schools, because we moved from Benton Elementary and were forced to go to Kingston three years ago whenever it opened. So we opposed that then, because it's a long way away, but we were told no, and we went with it. Gave all Benton Elementary clothes away, bought all Kingston stuff, I have enough to get my kid all the way through 4th grade. But now you want me to move back, and he'll be going to 3rd grade, or 2nd grade, excuse me. And the transportation issue, my daughter goes to middle school, she has to get on the bus at 6:00 a.m. So Kingston picks up at 7:15, the bus comes down our road either way. If a hardship is allowed, then I'll take my kid to school. I would rather him be in a stable environment where he knows his teachers, he's had the time to acclimate and be a part of his second family, which schools are second family, have no issues with Benton, Kingston, Legacy. We have fantastic schools. Anybody that gets to live in Benton and go to any of our schools should be ecstatic that they are a part of our community. But I do believe there are, those 112 kids do not need to be moved. So I hope that you either don't vote, if you decide to vote, please vote no, and decide to go with a hardship possibly, if the lines are not to be changed, it's only the 112 kids on the left side of Benton Road, which is the west side that I'm discussing. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Jeffrey Cooksey.
How are y'all doing today? Guess you aren't too happy. I moved in this district two years ago on the intent to go into Kingston. My son has loved every minute of it. And comparing the two schools, my question is, can y'all actually pull up the grade ratings for Kingston versus Benton?
I didn't hear you.
Can y'all pull up the grading, rating, ratings for Kingston versus Benton?
We, we have that information, yes, sir.
I believe Kingston was rated a C, I mean, 102A, and Benton was rated a C. Education is very important. My problem is, I don't have a problem with the redistrict, but the competitiveness between Legacy Kingston and Benton is unfathomable. Why are we not spending money to bring these grade ratings up of Benton, Benton to where Kingston's are? The school's outdated, it's the smallest in the district, and if you're looking at your map there, you're taking 112 kids, but you're also moving 112 opportunities of kids that are already in the school system that are flourishing. I honestly don't agree with that. I came from, and when I moved to Benton, I was moving from an F-rated school for education. But there is a clear difference between Benton, Kingston, and Legacy as far as their grading on their test. Why are we not trying to make these places more competitive with amongst each other? Why has Benton Elementary left behind and hasn't been updated? You're, you're moving more kids into a facility that can't support any more kids. And that's a fact. The student ratio versus Benton and Kingston's is way different. Like you said, we didn't have these facts till two days ago. And I'm sorry if I'm rambling on, but there's a lot of questions going on, just not in my neighborhood. There's 10 kids in my neighborhood that go to Kingston. They had to move four years ago, wasn't years ago. When I looked at behind my house, that district line ran up, ran up the railroad tracks for that area. I bought my house knowing my kid was going to go to elementary school to Kingston. But my, more, my question is, kind of on my paperwork, redistrict or not, what are we going to do to bring Benton school grades up and, and learning? I mean, y'all are saying this, and I'm going to repeat what she says, if you actually bend to Benton and live in Benton and drive the area, the kids that you're moving out of that district as far as left of the railroad tracks, there's a lot of desegregation. You're moving it back into one school. And low income. We are, y'all are also, y'all are saying possibilities of inflation of people moving in. Y'all are also saying probability of teachers moving out and people falling out. You're, you're moving districts on probabilities that's not even set in stone. That haven't even developed yet. Technically, that, that lawsuit was when? 19 what? 63? You added Kingston, you redistrict the whole area up in Benton, why are we doing it again? I'm sorry if I sound stupid, but people are frustrated about this. It's a whole different opportunity, that Kingston versus Benton, Legacy versus Benton.
Thank you, Mr. Cooksey, your three minutes is up. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Alexandria Cooksey.
Respond one thing. Remember I said earlier that the Department of Justice had made certain proposals? I think it's only fair for the audience to know that the proposal for, for the Old Plain Dillon Road was for that entire area to be rezoned to Plain Dealing. That was the, that was the proposal of the government to rezone that entire area to Plain Dealing, and this was the alternative to that proposal.
Thank you. Alexandria Cooksey. Alexandria Cooksey.
Good evening. I think all my points were mentioned. I just wanted to let y'all know that this is a serious matter with our kids that are moving back and forth, and we just need stability, because we're not going to improve if we constantly change our area back and forth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Quincy Gardner.
Good evening, President Cheetham, Superintendent Downey, board members. It's a great time to be in Bojor Parish. If you have a student here, you know that they are part of one of the best systems in the state, if not the United States. I come today as a parent, would hate to feel like that I'm just being shoved something at the last minute. And that's really my, my biggest concern. Other concern is, weeks, school started last week, and there've been several issues with a number of buses in our district. How is this going to affect the different bus stops that we have in our parish? I was told that there was a gate in my apartment complex that my son should wait at to get picked up, where there's no gate in my apartment complex. So my bus stop hasn't been updated in years. So how, how is the district going to stay on top of this if we're rezoning? Are we going to also go back up and look at the bus stops and be sure that they are in appropriate places and safe places for our children to get on and off at? My last concern is, what are we going to do for schools like Rushing and Benton High School, Benton Elementary, and those schools that are on that side of town, that don't have any diversity, much diversity in it? And scores are steadily slipping, in part because of that. I chose to live in the district, the zone that I live in, because I knew where Rushing was heading, and I wanted to be a part of helping turn that around. So those are my three concerns. I, I would have the preference that you not vote on this tonight, not because the people that worked on it didn't do a good job, but as a parent, I don't want to feel like I'm forced to have this at the last minute, because the district waited so long to get this together. Mr. Cheetham, I would also like the opportunity to come back and share some of the things that the Bojor City Optimists Club is ready to do with this district. I signed up for that particular part in the good news section, but didn't get a chance to come forward, so I'd like a moment later to share that with you.
Mr. Gardner, I do have to apologize. When I saw your request, I saw the school zone, but I did not see the good news and recognition part on there. Do you want to talk to us now about that?
Great, and thank you for the opportunity again. Each year, the Bojor City Optimists Club adopts the Sunshine Room as one of its projects for the community. Right now, we are getting ready to prepare at least $1,000, to purchase at least $1,000 worth of things to fill that room with, so the kids of our parish can go back to school and stay in school, whatever they need to be successful. Right now, we are currently working on science fair grants for Title I schools to give children that attend there a better opportunity to explore their creative side and investigative side. I had an opportunity to talk to a number of principals and asking them, what else could we do? Everybody knows about the, how much, many dollars we give away each year for teacher grants. We wanted to do something extra to kind of expand that, and some of the teachers mentioned that they have bright students who simply cannot afford to compete in the science fair. So we wanted to extend that opportunity to them. This year, we are, we are looking for more active joy clubs, and we're working out a plan to give teachers access, to support them more, to build those clubs. We had two students to attend, to attend the National Convention for Joy, Junior Optimism, Junior Optimist International Clubs, and they excelled at this level. They came back excited for a new school year with some plans to make more students of this parish become active in service learning. So from their visit to our international convention, this year, we are looking to implement service learning scholarships for students graduating from the Bojor Parish school system, complete X amount of community service hours, and we'll give you X amount of dollars to go to school. And one last thing that I wanted to do, you all each should receive an invitation to attend our annual installation banquet. Please, when you get that RSVP right away, because we want you there, because we want you to be a part of what we're doing in this parish to make it better. Again, Superintendent Downey, we appreciate the relationship that you have given us, the opportunity to have a relationship with this district to make it better for our kids. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
I just want to, to the people who spoke this evening, we're, we're in a little bit of a bad predicament here, because as a parent, I completely, I feel your heart for your students and for your children about being uprooted from here, moved to here, and it probably looks like we're up here trying to make a decision on your behalf, and so we're, we're on the thin line between your concerns and also the concerns of, of case that started in 1964 that we're trying to clear up. I think the good thing about it is, once we, once we get that thing cleared in court, it's going to allow us to not have to make changes every time these fractions change a little bit along the way. And I know your students may be out of their situation that they're currently in, but I did want to let you, you know that we, we hear you, I mean, we've gotten the emails and we love your kids, we think they're going to be great in any, any school that they go to. There is, I heard one, one statement, there, there's no ratio differences between the two, the three schools. All of them have the same student to teacher ratio. I don't know if that's what, exactly what you were talking about, but those ratios are all the same, that we use the same in an elementary school in Bojor Parish. But I just wanted to let you know that we, we do hear your concerns and we, as a, as a parent myself, I completely, my heart goes out to you when you're having to deal with these consequences of possible 11 people on the board trying to make a decision to get rid of a court case that's been going on us long. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we hear you and, and thank you for coming and speaking on behalf of your children.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Yates, come on up. I knew I was going to do that. Would you like to speak also, sir? Anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, I know so many of you here. I appreciate you hearing me. I'm a grandmother. There's a little area that we've not discussed. It's Care Jokes, Care Jokes Crossing, and Victoria's Point. Stockwell Place Elementary has been an excellent school and been serviced by those communities of those subdivisions for years. You're asking 33 children to leave their neighborhood, see the school that they have gone to, that their siblings have gone to, and take a right and go up 220 to Legacy, I mean, excuse me, WT Lewis. Good schools, both of them are excellent schools, but why would you do that? The gentleman just spoke about the high school students that could see Bojor High School and had to go to Airline. So why would you take this 33 children from Stockwell and send them to WT Lewis? It's going to cost more in gas, more bus time, children riding a bus that could ride their bicycles. We don't have many pedestrian-friendly schools. And it's so sweet in the morning to see mothers walking their children to school, or a little boy riding his bike to school. And when you take those children to WT, you're going to take that away. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Trey Gibson, and another area we haven't talked about is Oak Creek subdivision. My son is currently a sophomore, beginning his sophomore year at Airline. I can tell you that my family is absolutely in love with Bojor schools. We had a problem in my family where my son's sister passed away from cancer just a couple of years ago. So he's been through a lot. But he's been through a lot with a lot of support from a lot of teachers and a lot of friends, and so he has been, become very successful. And in fact, he is actually in AIM, and he is at Bojor Parish Community College tonight, taking a college class. And so I'm very, very, very proud of him. But he is very, very, very concerned about losing the opportunity to stay at Airline for the rest of his career. So he actually asked me tonight, since he couldn't be here, he had to go to class, to speak on his behalf. And so I want to share his thoughts. These are his words. "High school is a trying time. Between turning in assignments, keeping in touch with friends, and holding up to the responsibilities of extracurriculars, we cannot stand to start over. Every year a student moves, they become an outcast in a sea of strangers. Keeping in touch with friends becomes harder. Extracurriculars we once excelled in, such as debate," he does debate, "are no longer offered at other places." And he knows that debate is not an option at Benton High School. He goes on to say, "To move and essentially start over the high school experience would add unwelcome stress and negatively affect the mental health of those involved. To remove children who are just discovering who they are from their environment would be a mistake." He wrote those in just a couple of minutes, and I told him I'd bring those thoughts too. We heard tonight that the minimal impact is just 350 students on a high school level. We've heard 112 in elementary, 30 some odd over here in Stockwell. So I don't even know what it would be on the high school level. One parent earlier tonight asked for a hardship. I would ask for those 350 students. I mean, if you're going to do this, give those parents, give those students, if it's such a minimal impact, as this gentleman says, and he's got a great plan, and I appreciate the gravity of the situation. But on behalf of my son, who has already been through so much in his short life, I would ask you to consider grandfathering in those people, those students who have made friends, done things, excelled in their careers. That's it. I think that would be the answer to everything here for these parents and for our children. So thank you so much, and I appreciate all you do. And on behalf of a lot of parents, you've already heard tonight, thank y'all for creating a great school system. Thank you.
I'm Kamon Henderson. I grew up basically Shreveport, Bojor area. I went to Parkway. Then I went in my career, I went to the Navy, enlisted, and then got picked up for commissioning program. And I went officer in the Air Force because I got smarter. So after that, you know, thanks. After my stint here, went to LSU down in Baton Rouge, and then I, I went on my career. I went to many different places, many different countries, seen different school systems, and that, you know, that's a whole nother topic of how we do things. But one of the things my concern, when my last duty station, I was fortunate to get Barksdale. I chose Barksdale, which everybody looked at me like I was crazy, over Hawaii, but I came back home, because I know the cost of raising a kid, and my grandma just retired, so I, I figured what was going to happen. So I came back here and I was able to retire with my wife, who's from Pennsylvania. After I retired here, I moved to North Carolina, take a job, and I was doing that job for a year. My wife, who's from Pennsylvania, said this is home. And she told me to go and come back, and told me to leave my job, that I was making plenty of money, to come back here to be broke, but I have my retirement, so I'm okay, unless you're going to give me some funds. But to come back here to go home. So one of my things is, is it available to show what the racial makeup of these schools are right now, and what the predicted racial makeup of all these schools are going to be in five years? And my second part is, my wife is not of the same race as me. I was curious to, how did you pick multiracial kids and where did you assign them, of what race?
Multiracial kids are whatever they sign up for, whatever race you put on their student record, that's what goes into my system.
I put both. So how do you do that?
If it would be other?
I would put, no, I put both races.
Okay. Well, it's, I take, I take the, the code for white, take the code for African-American, and then I combine all the other codes together as other. That's what we look at when we're doing these cases. Normally, in Louisiana and most of the country, unless you're in Arizona, where you've got like eight large demographic groups to deal with, American Indian and whatnot. Here, we're dealing with mostly African-American and white. And so those are the ones that we look at, and everybody else is put into other. So depending on how you put the race down on the student registration.
Depends on whether they went to black or other, or white.
But I put both. That's the problem.
Or then it's.
My wife is white, so I put black and white for my daughter. So that's what, that's just, it's just one of the things, it's, you don't have to immediately have an answer, but is this something to, I was curious to.
Yeah, normally if it's a black and white, then it goes in as the, as black.
Okay.
On, on the, that's generally how the DOJ takes a look at their, their profiles.
Okay. And then if, if that racial makeup is available, I would love to see it and to see the projected one later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Michelle Wickstrom, and I have two twins in elementary school. I am prior military myself. I was raised here. I went to Stockwell, I went to COPE, I went to Airline. I left to join the United States Air Force, and I came back here. We lived in a subdivision that we researched schools from Shreveport to Bojor, and we've heard so many good things about Legacy that that's where we planted our home. So when we had our babies from birth, we knew that they would be going to Legacy. We had the opportunity this year, God blessed us with the opportunity to build, and we literally chose neighborhoods in the Legacy subdivision. Not that Kingston's a bad school, not that Benton's a bad school, but my twins are so impressionable, and they have so many friends that they've grown to love. And my, my daughter just, she even calls the teacher's mom, like she'll be home, she's like, hey, at school today, my mom, my mom. And this is something we've been doing for years. We just built our house two months ago. We have been so blessed with Legacy, and now we're finding out that overnight, we're getting redistricted. And I don't think that's fair to the families that have searched out where they need to be. Being military, it's such a huge honor to be with different people of different cultures. And I know both my kids, they're in different classes this year, they have a wider range of kids. But if you're telling me that we're getting changed because we're putting black, white, Indian, or Hispanic, because I am Hispanic and my father, my, my, my father is German, my mother is Hispanic, my husband is Scandinavian, so if you're telling me that what we need to do is basically, from what I'm understanding, is on every form we fill out from here now, it's just everyone mark other. Because that would be the best way to not have this be a problem, is you'd stay in the same area. But people try to be where they feel the most comfortable, and not that Kingston isn't a bad decision, or Benton's a bad decision, or Stockwell. And I know that this is going to go to God's glory, whatever the decision is made, is that is all we can do is pray that God's going to take over this. But I'm just asking you to please not do this rezoning. Please just think about that the hardships it's going to cause on the kids, whether they're in elementary school, middle school, or high school, as that man had mentioned earlier, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I want to start out by saying. I want to start out by saying my name is Anna Buffkin. I'm a lifelong resident in Benton, as well as my family and many generations of my family. Several members of my family are retired schoolteachers, so thank you to all of the teachers, the staff, board members, for all that you do, for everyone that has gone through everything to put this all together. I also want to start out by saying I know that no one likes change. We never like change, especially when you're the one affected by that change. My primary concern is I understand the lawsuit, that it needs to come to an end, that y'all are under a time crunch, certain restrictions, that the DOJ just returned the information back to you two weeks ago, that this is potentially a viable option. My primary concern, I understand all of the parents whom will have to, you know, undergo the expense of changing schools from uniforms, et cetera, as well as the change that it will impact their children. My primary concern is for those students who are now being asked to go from a grade A school to a grade C school. This is where my concern lies. My children are both under the age of two, so they are not currently affected by this change, but they will be impacted in the future. I love Benton Elementary School, I love all of Bossier Parish. I went to Benton Elementary, as well as middle school and high school, and I understand what we're trying to accomplish here today, as far as transportation, capacity, et cetera. That being said, I also know that there are talks of a Turtle Creek Elementary School, in that, you know, just based on geographic area, those areas that will likely go into that group in the future, you know, I know that's probably not determined yet when that construction will begin. But, as the parish continues to expand, that obviously will have to be taken into consideration. So, my concern is that the more rural areas and the original Benton, as it was, those families, a lot of them, many generations still living in these areas that we're talking about change, and that currently go to Benton Elementary, you know, that we serve them as well as we serve all of our schools. And I know that all of you want the best for each student in Bossier Parish, especially, you know, many of you have served in some capacity with the school board for many years. So, my primary concern is simply for the board and the administrative staff to come up with a plan to better Benton Elementary. I know there are a lot of great things that are going on at Benton Elementary. I have many friends whose children go there, love their teachers, the programs that are offered there. But, you cannot take away the fact that that school was rated a C while Kingston and Legacy were rated A schools. So, you know, I know a lot of families personally that live on Old Plain Dealing Road. I know Ms. Smith is my representative, and her family will be affected by this. And so, my main concern is just to look into what we need to do to bring Benton up to an equal level. I understand that change is hard, and for the parents with the uniforms and everything, like I said before, but it's one thing to ask a student to go from a grade A school to a grade A school versus asking families to go from a grade A school to a C school. So, that's my primary concern for tonight, and I appreciate everything that you all do. I know it's difficult, and you have a decision to make, and it's not just your opinions or what you feel in your heart, but also knowing that there are legal implications involved in this. So, I appreciate everything you do, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, board members, are there any comments?
If we could maybe just have Ms. Gag address that issue. I think I had talked to Superintendent Downey about that question before.
Ms. Gag.
Good evening, Mr. Downey, President Cheatham, members of the board, audience members, and some families that I went through a transition with them as their new principal when Kingston did open, so I do have compassion there for sure. I hope to clarify, though, where Benton Elementary stands in our new letter grade system, and just to give some history. Over the past 16 years, Benton Elementary has experienced, Mr. Thompson, if you could just hold on that slightly, that's closing. Thank you. Over the past 16 years, Benton Elementary has experienced three state accountability changes and two population shifts due to new schools opening in one of the fastest-growing areas of our district, which is a good thing. From 2003 to 2012, Benton Elementary progressed from a two-star out of five-stars school. My children attended Benton Elementary when it was a two-star school. Then they progressed to a three-star school, and then to a C-minus school, and then to a C-school. Benton Elementary made steady progress and reached an A status for two years during another accountability transition in 2013. Benton Elementary has maintained a high B performance score, including this past school year, if the score was calculated under the old formula. And we could really get into the weeds on this, but we experienced a shift in our letter grade system and how our letter grades are calculated. And ultimately, Benton Elementary, if they were still under the old formula, considering they're right on the bubble, they would be a B school still. This past accountability shift resulted in four of our schools dropping a letter grade because of the formula change, and Benton Elementary was one of those. Letter grades and lines do not need to divide this community. I know we will not let our letter grade define our school system or our schools. There are some things we certainly cannot control, this is one of them. And one thing out of our control as well is the state's accountability formula. Last year, the district saw growth in areas needing improvement, so those areas of improvement are within our control. District leadership and school-level leaders respond to the call for system improvement every day, and that response was clearly evident at Benton Elementary this past school year. I have not spoken to Mrs. Gates about this presentation. She's very humble, a very humble leader, a very compassionate leader, and we might be seeing some of these statistics for the very first time tonight, and, and their progress, which I'm personally very proud of. Under the new and current accountability system, Benton Elementary's school performance score was calculated at a 73.9 for the 2017-2018 school year, which is 1.1 points from a B. Had the calculation remained the same under the old formula, the Benton L's SPS would have been an 86.6, which is a B, under the new letter grade system. Also, another hurrah for Benton Elementary. In 1718, Benton Elementary was a top gains honoree for their progress index, earning a letter grade of A in that index. There are a couple parts to our formula for accountability, and one is the assessment index, and one is the progress index. And to have an A in progress is outstanding. And another hurrah for Benton Elementary, actually concerning this past school year, the school year of 1819. They are our number-one school in our district, tied with Elm Grove Elementary for students reaching mastery or better, with an increase of 7% overall in all three content areas, math, science, and ELA. This was just recent information. Their math gains this past school year, they're the second-largest gains in our district with an increase of 11% of students scoring mastery and advanced. Now, it's time for the chart. Mrs. Gates, I don't know if you're in the room. I sort of looked around, but if you're not, maybe you're watching online. What we do is we, we watch for trends in the data, and this is by far one of the most impressive in our district this past school year, and the gains that these fourth graders made compared to where they were as third graders. They have level and equal learning opportunities at each of our schools, including Benton Elementary. And this cohort of kids, who we will follow through their middle school years as well, will continue to watch this growth. This is proficiency ratings, kids that are scoring basic, mastery, and advanced, okay, that our state still recognizes as being proficient. To have those sorts of, those kinds of increases is, is pretty powerful, to say the least, and this speaks to Benton Elementary and the strides that they have made this past year to just, you know, better those opportunities for kids. So, very impressive. And just another graph is strictly the assessment index, and it's strictly raw data. Not all student scores are included in a school's performance score. There's a lot that goes into that, we're not going to talk about it. But, again, I just wanted you to have the visual, to know that while we don't have a finalized letter grade for them right now, and I, and you have heard me say this before, Mr. Downey and leaders in the room, I don't have a magic ball, I don't have a crystal ball. But, to be 1.1 points away from a letter grade of B last year on a transitional formula, I really have high hopes for them this year when we have letter grades released. They did a fantastic job last year, so proud of them. And I know they'll continue progressing in that way. Thank you. Do you have questions, though?
Thank you, Ms. Gag.
Welcome.
Mr. Hammons, on the, several questions about the timeframe that we've got to have this back to the Department of Justice. Several of them were concerned, several of the parents were concerned about hurrying up and voting on this. What is the timeframe we're looking at?
We have to have this submitted to the court before September the 16th. Now, to do that, we have to have these maps put in the proper format, we have to have the proper leading, legal pleadings prepared, we have to get them to the Department of Justice, they have to sign off, we have to sign off, and they have to be filed to court. All of that can't be done overnight. It's going to take a few days, perhaps a week, to get that accomplished. And that's assuming that the board approves this particular plan. If anything in this plan is changed, then we actually have to go back and start over again with negotiating those changes with the Department of Justice. Can I say one other thing, too, while I have the floor, and that is that I understand the comments about, "I bought a house here," or "I bought a house there," but, you know, I've done this enough times to know that when you have 22,000 children in a system, they have to be assigned to a school. They have to be. And so, you assign children to the school, and if you have growth in an area, then you have to take some of those children and reassign them to another school. Now, this doesn't, it doesn't matter if you have a school desegregation case or you don't. It's an issue of capacity. You go build a new school, you go build a new school, you're going to take children out of existing schools to assign to a new school. You may have built a, built a home or bought a home very close to that school, assuming that you're going to take your child to that school. And, you know, there's no control over that, is the point I'm making. And because of the rapid growth that you have in this parish, you're presented with issues that other school systems don't have, and that's one of them, is how do you handle this growth? Because it's inevitable, whether you have a desegregation order or you don't, it's inevitable that you're going to have to rezone schools, and that there are children who are assigned to some schools who are going to have to be reassigned to other schools. And that has nothing really to do with this particular proposal, it has to do with the fact that that is going to be inevitable, one way or the other. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. The other thing, too, is that I, you know, I began by saying that doing nothing is not really an option, and I, you know, I heard that being suggested. And I don't really think that is an option, as indicated before, because we do have to submit this to the court. We have a court order to do it, and that court order says at the end of the 1920 school year, we got nothing. We got nothing. Now, that gives us, one of the reasons why that this is coming at this time is because it took us months, basically, to get response back from the Department of Justice. But, when we got it, we were very happy with it, because we put a lot of time and thought into this proposal, and the fact that they would agree to it, you know, to me was, was very, very good. But, it doesn't change the fact that we couldn't get it here any earlier. And then, perhaps one week earlier, but my concern, as Mr. Cheatham knows, the superintendent knows, is we were getting ready to start the school year. And I was concerned that if we had this conversation at the beginning of the school year, that the public might be confused, and they might believe that these were changes that we were talking about making this year. So, I did ask to have this delayed by one week, so that we could get the 1920 school year underway, and so when we had these conversations, everyone would know that we're not talking about any changes this year. The only changes we're talking about will be changes that went into effect next year. That also gives us, basically, the entire year, and I say gives us, it gives the superintendent and his staff the entire year to ease the transition for these students, to make, to look at individual special circumstances that may exist from time to time, and to do what's best for those children and for the system as a whole. If we had waited before, you recall, before this date was changed, we were to submit this plan in April for implementation in August. Now, you can imagine the turmoil that you would have had with a plan that would have been come out, we were submitting it in April, the court may not have approved it until May or June. Let's assume that the court approved it in June for implementation in early August. It would have been, in my opinion, mass chaos. And by doing it this early in the school year, it gives the superintendent and his staff the opportunity to, to take the steps that are necessary, to, to look at all of those transportation pickup points, the dates, the times, the places, to go over all of this, so that when that transition begins next fall, it's in, the system is in the best position to make it work well. So, again, I just wanted to add those, those thoughts while I had the podium, but I'm also happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Hammons, I, I said I wasn't going to talk much on this, but I do, you did contact us, you contacted me immediately when, when you found out that the DOJ would approve this, and I believe you and I were presently surprised, because there was part of me that believed that we were going to have to move people from Benton and bus them to Plain Dealing. And I did not like that. I can remember growing up when I had to go 16 miles to Elm Grove every day. I rode a bus for quite a while, going through Golden Meadows and Southgate. So, I was not a fan of, of what they were asking us to do, and we were, I was really concerned that they weren't going to approve this. So, the fact that they approved it, again, like Mr. Bamberg said, as a parent myself of a, of a fourth grader, I, I would, I would be upset, I would be hurt. But, I also, just like Ms. Smith said earlier, I also believe our kids are resilient. I believe our kids, they're not going to have the same teacher that they had last year, they're going to have a new teacher, so they start all over with, with the new teacher. And again, I'm, it's easy for me to say, as my fourth grader sits up here today, he doesn't have to move yet. But, he might have to move in his future. And as a parent, I have to, I have to be able to accept that. I don't have to like it. I'm not asking that, that, that the 350 kids that are moving, I don't expect to like it. I don't like that the 12 of us or 11 of us are up here and we have to make a decision based off a lawsuit from 1965. And we are, we have been working, and, and Mr. Hammons and Mr. Hefner, for, for years on trying to get rid of this, this lawsuit from long before I was ever born. And they, they have worked very hard on getting this. The, the fact that we're bringing it out so soon to give people a year to adjust, I thought that was very important, because, not saying that everybody of those 350 people can move, or would want to move, but that is, that, that we're giving enough notice, and we're pushing through with this to get this taken care of with the lawsuit, to give plenty of time for people to make adjustments, changes, come talk about a hardship, whatever the case may be. So, I, I, again, as much as this is, for my parent chair, I get, I understand, I also know that, that, that our job, and, and talk about Mr. Hefner, he's done a great job of projecting not only five years out, 10 years out, 15 years out, and his projections have been pretty solid for years, on projecting where the growth is going to be, how our racial makeup's going to be, and, and, you know, we, we, sure, we might miss the spot, sure, we're, we're making guesses, educated guesses on new neighborhoods, and we get the information of, of different schools, or neighborhoods that are going to be close to our schools. But, I won't keep rambling on. I, I do want the public, everybody that's here, and people that are watching, to know that there's not a, a person sitting up here that wants to do this. I don't want to vote yes for this. I don't want to change 350 children's lives. I don't want to change 350 children's lives. But I also know it's something that unfortunately, we are in a position where we have to do. And I will be voting yes for this tonight, not because I like to play with families and, and children and moving them around, but because it's just something that we have to do as a board.
Mr. President.
Mr. Wiggins.
Thank you. I am blessed to be the longer-serving Board Member, as you see tonight. In my initial, I've been ill, I was in here for the, with the deliberations and things like that. And when I heard about it, I began to make calls today to see what was going on. And my first reaction was to vote no, because of all the concerns you voiced tonight. But we have no choice. I've been for diversity since it happened. I was in the military when this thing came about, fighting for the country. And I still believe there's some merit in things we do, although it might not be, it's not, it's necessary it was back in that time. However, Mr. Hammond, I've known him for over 20 years, when he first came to this Board. And there's a saying I have, that since man to man is so unjust, I hardly know which one to trust. I've trusted many to my sorrow, but Mr. Hammonds is a good man, he has done a good job. So I'm going to trust him today, but I will be checking on him minute tomorrow. So I'm voting yes tonight. Thank you.
One more question.
Buckhouse?
Mr. President. I understand everything, and I, as far as what you've explained tonight, but the biggest one that maybe looks a little strange to me is, as Ms. Yates explained, taking the 17 students, driving them past Stockwell to go down the street and going to WT Lewis. Am I accurate on that?
I think it was 33, as I recall.
33? There's absolutely no way we can straighten that out. I understand what the other parents are concerned about, but this one seems to be a little, there's no way to, I know you've looked at everything, Mr. Hammonds.
And we, and we looked at that probably longer and harder than any other change, for the simple reason that it was the only change in the entire plan that required students to go any further to school than they currently go. And the reason, and Mr. Hefner might be able to help me with this, but my recollection of our conversation was that Stockwell is at capacity or overcapacity already, and growing. And so there was going to have to be some part of the Stockwell zone cut out. Some, some part of Stockwell was going to have to be moved, because the school was overcapacity and growing. And there was space available at WT Lewis. And so we moved the closest group of students from Stockwell to WT Lewis, to get us within the capacity at Stockwell, and to keep us within the capacity at WT Lewis. So that was the reason why that move was made. And again, it was based in part on demographic studies showing that the Stockwell area was going to continue to grow. So those were the reasons, and Mr. Hefner can help me if I, but that was, that's my recollection of our conversations about that, and we had many, because again, I wanted to be able to stand up here and say, "Every child got a shorter bus ride." And I could say that, I think, for every child except for that particular 33. And that's why we looked at it so long and so hard, but we couldn't figure out where else you could take children away from Stockwell to reduce the capacity.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we put this to vote, whether or not we will accept this and send it to the courts for approval via the Department of Justice.
I have a motion by Mr. Newman. I do know we have a comment.
I'd, I'd be voting no for this. I, I know that there are some good pros, but there are some, some cons that we're not looking at. And so therefore, I cannot and I will not vote yes on this. I will be voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Arby. I have a motion by Mr. Newman.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Wiggins, please vote.
Item 3.04, Discussion and Action Concerning Type I Charter School Contract Submitted by Barksdale Global Power Museum Association, presented by Bob Hammonds.
Mr. President, members of the Board, you know, when I went through this proposal that we just, that you just voted on, you'll notice I made no reference to the charter school at Barksdale. And if in fact that is to be part of a, as a type I charter school, that means it's a school that would be operated by this school board, which would mean that the federal court would have to approve the opening of that particular school. You know, as, as Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Wiggins, thank you very much for your very kind comments. As he indicated, I've had the privilege of representing this Board since 95. And during the, during the period of that time, I've seen how much respect this Board has always had for, for the officials at Barksdale, and how much respect the officials at Barksdale have had for this Board. It's been a great relationship for a long time. And when this particular charter group came to the Board a couple of years ago, I was actually at that meeting, I remember it vividly. And the Board, again, at the request of the, of Barksdale, wanted to increase the opportunities that were available for the children living on the base. And at that time, the Board approved the creation of a type I charter at, on the base, for the benefit of the, the children of servicemen and women living there. At, at that time, the, the process was that there would be negotiation of a contract between the Board and the charter officials. There has been negotiation of that contract over the last period of several months, but there have also been some other significant changes that have taken place. Initially, at the request of this Board, you authorized me to go to court and to seek a change in the court order that would allow high school students living on the base to choose the high school of their choice to attend high school. To my knowledge, that had never been done anywhere in the country. But based on the authorization from the Board, I filed such a motion with the court, and we received permission from the court to allow a high school child living on the base to choose any high school in the parish that he or she wished to attend. The base officials came back to the Board a few years later and said, "Well, that's great, but that only affects the high school." And so the Board authorized me to go back to court and file another motion. And the, the other mo, next motion I filed was to give all students living on the base, K to 12, the ability to select whatever school that they chose to select. And again, that was presented to the court, and again, that was approved by the court. So at that point, the children living on the base now had the authority to go to, to go to any school that they chose, which of course was one of the things that led to their request for the charter to begin with. And then thirdly, you'll notice that the plan that you just authorized me to submit to the court has certain attendance zones. And included in the attendance zone are most of the students who live on the base being zoned into the new, into the schools in Horton, which was one of the requests that was being made on their behalf by officials from the base. So there have been three significant changes, to give the students living on the base all of these options, actually more options than any other children in your parish have. Because of that, I would submit that there's no longer a need for this type I charter. And the recommendation that I would make to the Board would be that you, you terminate the negotiations, you end the negotiations with this charter group, which does give them the ability to go forward if they want to try to seek a type II charter or some other type of charter, they would still have the ability to do it. But that the negotiations toward achieving a type I charter, opt, to be operated by the school system, be discontinued. So that would be my recommendation to you with regard to this item. And again, the reason I asked to have this item placed on tonight's agenda is because your vote on that item is going to determine whether or not I have to make reference of this charter school when I submit the plan to the court. So again, that's the reason I'd ask to have these back to back.
A move we accept our attorney's recommendation.
Second motion by Ms. Smith, we have a second by Mr. Bullard, please vote. Mr. Bamberg?
I know, I know I asked some questions about this in, in that past meeting. Do we, do we have any options here to keep that as part of this plan? And send it to them, and it be, because right now, I mean, I, I gotta believe that probably nothing's going to happen. I don't think this group has acquired land. At this point, no meaningful progress has been made. But once again, it's our, it's our military families, we've negotiated a contract with them, and although I've heard that maybe we have had discussion, is there, is there any comment on discussions we've had with military personnel concerning this, or?
Well, let me, let me just add this, the, if the Board discontinues the negotiations with them as a type I, that frees up this organization to seek another type of charter. As long as you, as you hold on to it, they cannot go forward to seek another type of charter. The reason why that, that organization might be looking at a type II charter is because in a type I charter, the charter school can only draw children from within the parish. So that means they have a very finite population of students from which they can draw. A type II charter can draw students from Shreveport, from Webster, from surrounding parishes to come into that school to help populate that school, should they choose to do that. If you do not discontinue the negotiations, then I will have to report in, in the submission to the court that that is still a possibility, but perhaps more importantly, for the people on the base, it would prevent them from going forward to seek a type II or another type of charter. So in order to give them all the opportunities that they might otherwise have, we, I really think that the Board needs to take some action to, to discontinue the negotiations.
I, I just want to make sure that this Board is seen as a, I mean, an entity that has worked with the military families in every moment that we could, when they came to us and immediately we approved whatever they wanted to do.
Right.
We give them K through 12, rezoning into the Horton District. And I won't speak for the rest of the Board, but if they came to us with any other venture that they would want us to participate in, I believe we'd bend over backwards to help that group, because they're so important to, one, the defense of our country, but they serve on a daily basis, so we can sleep peacefully at night. And I believe we ought to give them every considerable option that we possibly can. I want to make sure that we're still doing that.
Still leave my motion on the table.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second, and waiting on Mr. Bamberg to vote. Motion carries.
All right, so, Mr. Hammonds probably going to need your help here. And I, I know we have to, we have to have a unanimous vote by the Board to do this, but I just think we need to have a conversation. Tuesday night, we'll be replacing a Board Member, and I would like to discuss, one, for our use of how, what does that look like for us, instead of coming here Tuesday and a debacle of trying to figure out what that's going to look like. And two, for the people that are putting an application in, what can they expect? I don't know if you have some leadership or another Board, discussion, I guess we have to make a motion to add that to the agenda.
It would be better to have a motion to add that to the agenda, it would require unanimous vote, and I'd be happy to try to answer those questions.
I make a motion to add to the agenda to, as a discussion item about how we handle the events of Tuesday night.
I have a motion by Mr. Bamberg, a second by Ms. Brotherton. Motion carries unanimously, so we have now added item 3.06, discussion of how the process is going to work on Tuesday night, when we come here to see about appointing District Five representative.
Well, let me just say that unfortunately, I've been down this road on a number of occasions, usually with employee, with Board Members who have died in office. But the, the procedure for appointing the, the person to fill the vacancy is pretty much left to the Board. There is no state law that talks about what you have to do. Some Boards advertise and get proposals and have people give little five-minute talks about why they think they should be picked to be on the Board. Other Boards don't allow that at all. A number of the Boards have Board Members that just come to the meeting, if they know somebody who they think would do a good job, they nominate that person to fill the position. And, and when the, when the nominations are completed, you finish the nominations and you vote on the nominations. Don't forget now, that under the open meetings law, you cannot go into executive session to talk about the pros and cons of the various applicants, which makes it a little bit awkward, you know, for you to say, "Well, I think Ms. Jones is better than Ms. Smith because of this or that and the other." I mean, it's, that can be somewhat embarrassing, but you do not have the authority to go into executive session to do that. So all of your conversations have to take place in public. Now, whether or not you use the nomination process, whether or not you let them make speeches or presentations, whether or not you do it based on, on a resume that they receive, the only thing you need to make sure is that they're more than 18 years old, and that they have lived in District Five for more than a year. And because unfortunately, I've actually had a couple of Boards who have gone through this process, who've heard from everybody, and then they select somebody only to find that that person didn't live in the district. And everybody ends up with egg on their face. So again, what you have to be able to prove is that they're 18 or older, and that they've lived in their district for a year. And if they don't have those qualifications, then they cannot be considered. And again, I said it's been embarrassing, it was actually, a Board Member died in office, and they appointed his son to fill the remaining, remainder of his term. And lo and behold, his son didn't live in the district. And so they had to immediately remove him from the Board, which was a very embarrassing moment. So again, those are the only requirements. Again, how you choose to do it, though, Mr. Bamberg, is up to the Board. And you can go any route you want. I think, I commend you for bringing it up tonight, so you can decide tonight what process that you want to use. Do you want to let them make a presentation? Do you want to look at written materials instead? How you, how do you want to do that? Just, you can't do it in private.
And that, and that's, obviously, Board Members, you know, our policy said that we had to post it on our website, and we had to post it on our journal, which is the Boja Press Tribune's website as well. And Sonia was able to do that for us almost immediately when the resignation was turned in. And so what Mr. Bamberg and, and I had wanted to discuss as a group tonight is, okay, we've, we've told everybody to have to have their resume turned in by four o'clock on Monday. And I've told the Board Members via text message that once we receive those, every Board Member will get a copy of that resume as soon as possible. So you'll have them Monday evening. And then Tuesday, we've got a special session scheduled for six o'clock on Tuesday, and that's kind of where we don't know, we need kind of input from everybody on the Board, okay? Are we going to allow everybody five minutes, 10 minutes? Are we going to interview? And I know the, the other tricky part about that is from the phone calls I've been getting, we might have 100 applicants. And, you know, so we don't know how many people are going to apply, which also makes it hard to say, "Are we going to give everybody five minutes? Are we going to give them 10 minutes? What are we going to give them?" But I think as a Board, we just need to kind of discuss some ideas. And not only that, are we going to give them five minutes to tell themselves about us? Are we going to ask questions? Are we not going to ask questions? And then, how are we going to vote? Are we going to vote like we do when we vote on a superintendent? Is everybody going to send in their, their person? And then we tally up, and if somebody has six votes, they're the appointee. If only two people have four, or it's four and three and two, so I guess that's where we're looking for ideas and information from the Board Members to make sure that, that we do this process. And Ms. Brotherton, I was the first one I saw raise her hand.
Okay. What I would like to see happen is, I think it should be very fair, and everyone should have an opportunity to speak Tuesday night. I would like to read the resumes on Monday night myself, go over those. I think that we should allow them, say, three minutes as an opening to tell about themselves, allow each Board Member, if they want to, one question, and then we do that, kind of like we do the superintendent. We hear from all of them, and at that time, after we've heard We hear from all of them, and at that time, after we've heard from all of them, we do a vote. And the first person that gets, what, six votes? Six votes gets the position. That's the way I would like to see it done.
So that was three-minute opening, is your suggestion? One question per board member, if they have one. If they don't have one, they just pass on to the next board member. And then, what do we do if it's, if someone doesn't get six on the first?
We would, I think you would go the top two, depending on how many we have. You know, we may have to go top three. I don't know how many applicants we're going to have.
Could we, just to carry it a step farther, we'll know the names of the individuals.
Right.
Have a ballot prepared with all the names on it, and each of us will mark it just like with superintendent. We count them. We got six for one, fine, we Cadillac. If we don't, we just go back again.
Until we get six.
On the top two, three, however many the board deems appropriate.
Yeah, let's say if we have over six, we would go three. If we have less than six, go top two.
I think a top two, just period, no matter what, whether we have 140 or we have five.
So the only, only caveat, oh yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead, Vice President.
[laughing].
I apologize to the secretary. If the two, if two people in the second position tie, we'd have to vote that tie off to get to the?
That's, that's one of the things that you typically do in a superintendent search, that comes up from time to time.
Okay.
So if we have a five and a three and a three, then we've got to vote off the three and the three before we can come back and do the first two.
Correct.
And again, all this is somewhat common sense, but I, I didn't want, I wanted us to all discuss that and be a part of the, the process on that, and there wouldn't be any surprises. Ms. Smith?
So are you going to have each candidate in here when the board is questioning those? Or are you going to have?
That came up today too, which was another reason why we, we were supposed to add this to the agenda early.
I say leave them in here.
Is that fair to them?
Well, I mean, they're going to ask the question. I, I mean, you may ask the same question to all of them. I, I think it's fair to leave them in here.
Open meeting.
That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, each one of them might get asked a different question.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, or, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to do like with the superintendents, go sit them in a room, look at each other.
No, and I don't think it's going to take that long for them to answer, where they're going to sit there and try to think of a better, I mean, I just think we should just leave them in here.
How are you going to select the order? Who goes first?
Random draw.
I'm counting on you to tell me how you'd like to do that.
How you want to do it.
Random draw? I recommend random draw.
Random draw.
Second.
I recommend Mr. Newman get the ballot together for us and get those random draw tickets together. Can you, would you mind helping us out with that?
I will do such.
Probably need to do it at the beginning. Does everybody show up at six and we do it at the end?
Well, everybody's going to get a copy of the resume Monday. Mr. Rowland and I talked, I think, about five o'clock, he's going to scan them to all of us. Mr. Slack and Mr. Wiggins, I'd like to get with y'all before we leave so maybe I can bring those resumes to you, or we can get them to you if you don't want to have them email, you know, emailed to you and then have to print them off. Or anybody else that doesn't have a way to print those resumes off, we'll print them for you and I'll bring them to you.
Good to deliver, please.
Except I don't think I go way out to Horton.
Yeah, you do.
I'll, I'll print.
You'll take care of him? Okay. You got it on your phone? Okay. That saves me. I'll still, I'll come to Horton.
I'll meet you.
We ain't sending a pigeon to business tonight.
Eric, you can come to my house.
Central office.
I really like that printer, it's broken.
And just shoot me a text message if, if you need us to get a copy. Mr. Rowland and I will get a game plan and have it for you. All right, anything we're not, everything sound? Yes, sir.
One other thing, Mr. Tiedem, I forgot to mention. I think you, I think the board members were already aware of this. The next election is not till into the spring. So the person that you select to fill this vacancy will be in this position until, pretty much until May of next year. So this is a little bit longer temporary appointment than usual, but I just wanted to make sure that the board members were aware.
Qualification for that election would be in January, and then that election will be in, in April. So the person that we appoint will, will be with us for, for quite some time, so.
All right, I got one more question. The difference between three and five minutes, you think if we gave them five minutes, it would condense the questions?
I don't see that many.
Oh, you see, don't see a bunch of questions anyway.
I don't think you're going to have much questions.
I think we say three minutes right now, and then if we don't have 100 people in here that night, we can, we maybe can change it to five.
Yeah.
And we don't need any motion for that, we just show up and that's the?
Yeah. Everybody good with that? Everybody got, anybody got any questions about that process? Mr. Newman, you got your to-do list?
I do.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you for not making me do it.
Item 3.05, Request Approval of Trip Requests. Mr. Downey?
These are in order. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Newman, second by Mr. Bullard. Motion carries. Yes, Mr. Bullard.
Point of personal privilege, we have a pressing need that I've become aware of, and I've discussed it with Colonel Haddon. And right here in this public forum, anybody that is just remotely interested in driving a school bus, we're in desperate need of bus drivers. Desperate need. So.
You're already recruiting.
Please, please see Colonel Haddon. He needs some people badly. Hopefully, some people are watching on the internet and spread the word.
Do you have to have that C, you have to have that CDL? Can't leave just anybody.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ben Layton. I'm here with my daughter, who is around the corner. Two years ago, I attempted to drop a bus. And it was, it was a lot of paperwork issues, but I spent six months, I went down to the library with the training. I went and I got my CDL, my CDL, I got the written test required. I went down to the school board, I got cleanings, I did all of that. I went down and took drugs. All of those things took so much, it was a pain for me, for who you are, a parent, a parent. But it's just not the life of this, if you're asking for a bus driver, and I'm trying to provide that. And I'm honing this, because it was so much, I wanted to do all of that. It's not, it's not comfortable, actually. I said, you know, you got the drugs, and it comes in, I was falling, and I'm honing this. But, you know, I go over 200 miles, I'm going to that library station, I did everything else, so it's been a lot of time. It's just that I'm not sure, I don't know. I'm talking about, I do, but I'm not sure. It was a, you know.
You're sitting next to the guy you can talk to about that. I think he'll be able to help you out.
And he wasn't in charge then.
This is the reason I'm here, is if I had a chance to, first of all, I want you all to understand, I think you are in charge of this, and I did, and they don't come up with my chance.
Thank you. All right, one more comment. Yes, ma'am.
What's your thing?
Fortune. She's talking.
Yeah. Okay, and I, I have to say something here. Mitch has almost punched me with his pen a few times. I have allowed to, tonight, people just to kind of raise their hand and talk in the crowd, and just for everybody at home watching, there's a form that you fill out at the desk out there, and then the board members and the superintendent, don't look at me and wonder what's going on. But I do appreciate everybody that was here tonight and did give their input and did have comments, and it was such a, in my opinion, as a parent, an emotional deal. I didn't want to not allow someone to, to speak their piece and have their comment on that. So just so, you know, for next meeting, you got to have a, got to have a comment form filled out, and, and we'll go from there. Item 4.01, Announcements and Superintendent's Comments.
Thank you, President Tiedem. Tuesday, August 20th, there'll be a special session at 6:00 p.m. here in the auditorium to appoint a replacement for a District Five board member. Next regular session meeting, September 5th, 6:00 p.m. here at the BIC. Next Building and Grounds Committee meeting, September 10th, 4:30 p.m. here at the BIC. Five o'clock, I'm sorry. Five o'clock, September 10th, Building and Grounds.
Thank you, sir. Item 5.01, Adjournment of the Regular Session of the Board.
Can I make a comment?
You most certainly can, sir.
I want to thank somebody for the new chairs.
Yeah, they're awesome.
Those others are worn out, like me. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Slack, second by Ms. Smith. Please vote.
This is something really good, you see.
Motion carries. We adjourn.